And I call the meeting of the Wolfson Town Council Board, would you please stand for the invitation? Remain standing until we take the lead through the bed tonight. I would introduce to the council and welcome to the community the new pastor down at the Wolfson Symphony Building, Stephen Sewell. And I thought this would be as good a way as any for him to get to know us and we to know him. Appreciate the partnership that we've had with the church over the years and we're sure that's going to continue with what we have to counsel Wolfson.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate it. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for your many blessings on us, God. We thank you for the leaders of our town and the God example that they set out to show and the direction that they lead our community in. Father, I pray right now that you would bless this meeting tonight, God, that you would bless their hearts as they seek your heart in the direction of our community. Help us to honor you in all things that we do and we'll be sure to give you glory and praise for it, it's in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Gordon, will you?
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you please hand me that book?
Okay, I got it.
I didn't even know I could put it across here, Paul.
Paul wanted to make my picture and it just triggered us so much, I forgot to bring my book around here. Well, having the audience so welcome tonight, we glad to see each of you. Have you had the opportunity, have you had the opportunity to review the agenda and the consent agenda? Are there any corrections, additions or additions to the minutes that we need to make? Chairman of the town motion that we approve the consent agenda which includes the approval of the working agenda, the mention from our last meeting, by any favor to the fire department.
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Absolutely.
We have a motion and a second discussion of the motion. How you vote, Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Chairman, who she is before?
Yes.
All right. Do we have, do we have a vote on the poll or do we?
We only have one bid that came in, which can be buried.
It's in there now.
Is that?
Yeah, it was in there. It's printed multiple pages.
We can probably do this together.
I'll go here, share.
Yeah, where you get it from? Yeah, don't you go take it down, take it down.
The other half will keep here tomorrow.
We had asked Margaret we needed to do ranking the sheeps since we only have one.
Is this, is this ranking proposal, is this, you said, be it open? This is not be it, this is their interest?
Right. We had it set tonight, we can rank it tonight, y'all, because it's the only one, or we can schedule another?
Is this, is this the one that we, we had last month, six weeks ago?
Yeah, we only have the one.
They told them they had one, we had to do the other?
Had to re-advertise.
And they only got one now?
Right. Right.
I propose that we number one ranking.
Do you know, Jeff, if we have to rank them?
When you have just one?
Yep.
And it's number one?
Okay, I asked Margaret, she was unsure, and I was like...
Well, if the state accepted it, they may just bid, I mean, do it again, will they accept it this time if it's only one?
Yes. If you bid it two times, they will.
Okay. Okay, can we take, do you think, Mr. Carter, we can take action on it now? We've read this, they proposed last month, and we have to redo it, and I'm sure the proposal is not going to be substantially different.
Right.
Yeah. If you recall, council, this is the one we had last month, or it may have actually been in April, but we had to redo it because the state ranked that, and I says that we have to have four. And so, we still don't have the votes that we can make. Is there discussion of this, or the chairman of the town motion that we rank DuBarre Engineers as number one, that we received when they ran?
I'll go ahead and make the motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on the motion. How you vote, Carter?
Yes.
Chairman, who she is before?
Yes.
Mr. Carter? Okay. We don't have any further agenda, the audience has signed in, it doesn't look like so, we will...
Take it home. Take it home. Right, I want to, can I have it? Okay, thank you.
If you can take one home, you can have mine.
I don't believe, actually, I have a little shade, but I'll just have it.
Okay, better work, we will begin with it.
Let me have it, Jeff.
Thank you for allowing me and my audience tonight. I'll begin with the color printout that Lynn made for you, thank you Lynn for taking care of that. When I proposed to you and ask you for permission to move the monument and the flag, I told you I'd come back to you and make sure that before we place it, it'd be where you want it to. And based on what I think was your conversation at the time, I've kind of done a pretty shady, I'm embarrassed about my mock-up there, but it tries to show you where I'm proposing that we mount this monument. It gets it up, out of prying hands, tiny hands touching, it's about a seven-foot mark up. It also allows me to attach it to the beam that comes across, because that's about a 30 or 40-pound piece of metal there, so it gives me a good sturdy hold. And so, what are your thoughts about that, about that monument placement there as we walk in the monument? Would you like it in another place? We could put it on the inside or put it on the corner? I just, I thought I'd give you an opportunity to move off the blank page.
You said it's up seven feet?
About seven feet, yes ma'am, I have to reach up to touch it, I'm six feet tall, I'm saying about seven feet, yes ma'am.
Would that be able to be read in that?
It'll be able to be read, but you'll have to be, you know, you'll have to be standing there looking at it. If you think about it, it's only about two feet away from my highs and normal people will be out three feet, it's...
Is that the bottom of it?
The bottom of it, yes sir. I'm glad to mount the top of it at seven feet, but...
Yeah, because it's probably, that's probably, probably too big, it's 20 inches or more probably.
Yes, sir.
So that won't take it in that deep?
Yeah.
If I'm being like Dionne for my life, or...
Why does Dionne get to get called that? No, I'm just kidding. Start with your wife. No, so would your proposal be maybe, I guess I could make a bracket and mount it at eight, or bring it all the way down to seven, what's your thoughts? I mean, all the way down to five, right, to the top. I have to be on that beam in some way. Would you prefer eight feet? Six feet? Seven? I mean, I went, I'm sorry, my mind went higher. It's at seven, would you prefer six or five?
Five would make it a dial level, wouldn't it?
That would work perfectly for me, I still have the top to mount into the solid beam so it'll hold it?
Yeah.
Then I'll do it.
Consider, consider that.
Absolutely, I'll do that. And then the other, go ahead, sorry.
I like your proposal better than I thought I would when you first mentioned it to us. When we first began talking about moving this, it was in the planner and, I'm not sure if that's in the footer or what, but Steve was wanting to move the whole thing, like have a monument sort of thing right out here so people could walk past it, or anything like that, but I think that, I was afraid of puncturing the skin on the building, you know, if you start a hole, you know?
Right. And I've been researching.
I like the way that looks.
There's some self-healing mounts that you can, you know, like as you screw the screw in, it'll expand, not foam, but a grease type stuff that seals up. So there are some items that are created specifically to mount on the side of a building like this so that you preserve your waterproof.
Sound okay?
Any questions? Come on, council. We'll have a five-foot center.
All right, we'll do it. On the other page, when we were, when we took down the flagpole, I don't know if you remember, but now that that lean-to is there, you can't see the flag from underneath the possum foul, so I have an alternative if you would allow me. My thought would be is that we mount that down there at the, kind of at the right field foul line of the big ball field, it's where there's some bicycle stands there, there's a little square that's made out. Thought maybe put it in the corner, that way both of your baseball fields have a place where you can pledge allegiance to the flag. And then our proposal would be is that we'll add one on the inside, maybe a wall mount, like on the door, so that when we have fun day or something, there's a flag there you can actually see, rather than imagining that you're pledging to a flag outside the building. So, but, so I was proposing that we move that big flagpole down there to where the ball fields can both see it, you know, for events that we might use it for. Because it's where it was, you can't see it from hardly anywhere, you know, it's over there right by the monument. So my proposal, I hope I've been able to clearly show you, again, that was my attempt to...
So that's going to be kind of, that's the tennis court, my reading right?
Yeah, you're across the road from the tennis court.
And we kind of like in the corner...
Near that old bathroom?
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
I think I understand that.
Yeah. And my proposal would be to put it in the corner where it can be clearly seen, just so it's out of the way for mowing and bicycles where the fences meet.
Or you want to leave the flagpole, that's the small pole that we have down there?
No, it's a pretty tough pole.
Is it?
It'll be plenty fun, we went down there and kind of imagined, you know, held rollers up in the air and...
I like that it have one at the bottom, or?
Yeah.
I like that.
So we thought we might just replace it down there if we're going to put it back up. We can put it back up by the possum palace, but it felt more natural to put it down there.
Even if you put it back up there, it needs to be moved in front of the building?
Yes, sir. And that felt like it was going to get in the way, that was, okay.
Yeah.
All right, are you okay with those thoughts?
Ladies and gentlemen?
I think it's a good idea.
We'll get this knocked out for fun day. Thank you for allowing us opportunity to make improvements and make things better.
Thank you. And we did, we did decide a lot of places that were, so we passed that, and y'all will have some plans to call.
Okay, I'll do that.
Absolutely.
And then the next part of my agenda item, and if y'all are ready to discuss and announce to talk about the volunteer force and move forward with that?
Yes.
And again, one of the things that we've been waiting on and that we're proposing, I don't know if Lynn was able, if we were able to create some, we had, we looked up some volunteer, possible volunteer forms that people might fill out, but we did definitely want to have a form that people would fill out. And then our, my ideas on this is that we would have the clerk and the clerk assistant continue to fill out work orders, and then we would make a decision. My proposal is that currently I would help lead out the volunteer force and that I would meet with the clerk and staff, and the city staff to determine, okay, these are things that a volunteer can do, and these are things that a volunteer can't do. And if there's a concern, then we'll raise the question back up, bring it back to the meeting. Currently, our volunteers do mowing, we do some meter locations, we just finished a meter repair, I mean, a leak repair this weekend. We had, one of our firefighters came out and helped us, Jeff helped us this weekend, and so we're adding a few new people that'll kind of help us in that crew. We currently clean bathrooms and just do a lot of things that are just general maintenance things that don't require skill, but does require a little bit of carefulness, and so you can't just throw anybody out there. We do some edging around the city and weed killing. But one of our main concerns was, you know, what legal threshold do we need to meet from this volunteer form? Like what is the minimum that the city would need to make you feel confident as far as who that person is, what, do we need to qualify them? Currently, we haven't done background checks on the people that are doing it, and because this organization of people won't be involved in city events, like we won't be the staffing, so we don't have to be concerned about things like, let me just be blunt, child predators, people that are on the list and stuff like that. We won't be the official staff at events, we'll just be doing things during the week that need to be done and be in the purview of the city. So, and so my idea was that I would kind of head it up and work with, and then with the clerk and the staff, and that when we have an opportunity to volunteer, we put it on the schedule and say, hey, we need someone to mow this. My assistant, one of my, one of our other volunteers, I just gave away my other sister, we have already decided every Friday morning we meet at 6:30 or 7:00 and we're mowing the possum palace, every other Friday. But we'd like to get other people on that schedule with us. And I think if people know, hey, every other Friday we're going to be down there, then they could just show up and jump on one of the other mowers or take a weed eater and go to work. I'll pause there and ask you what your questions may be, and I think you may have to ask us what, help us with the answers, or you may have questions, Jeff?
The main thing from my perspective is that anything that anybody does on behalf of the city is essentially the city doing, and the fact that they're a volunteer doesn't change that analysis, which I think we all know and agree on. If they're not interacting with the public, that does take care of a certain layer of background checks, things of that nature. They're going to need oversight, just like any employee. If you know when we put them on something that they shouldn't be doing, you know they shouldn't be doing, they're unable to do it, or they have a propensity for doing it wrong or causing harm, any of those kinds of things, that's a potential liability to the city. So that's, my analysis is always liability, what is it going to be on the city? So, no different than any other employee here. But it's totally fine to have them, it's great to be able to have, you know, you find folks that work out for you.
Right. And so with that carefulness, we probably would delineate, of course, that a staff member of your selection would be the ultimate supervisor. I would just be organizing people, not necessarily playing the role of a supervisor, since that would be my official role within the city.
So would that be kind of like even with the church, where basically you have your volunteers, and anything that goes under the entity that is the church or the town hall here, basically the general liability insurance policy that the town hall, or the city group of town had, would basically be what would cover the volunteers if something were to happen?
Well, that may not be the case, depending on length of the policy. So every insurance policy is just a contract, and they don't all read the same, so you want to make sure who is and who isn't covered.
Gotcha.
Volunteers typically are, but not always.
Okay.
So I guess we would need to pursue that clarification.
Yeah, how big is your, is your group, is it, can be defined, is it 15 this week?
Oh, listen, it's, right now, right now it's four. And so, we'd like to grow it, I don't know if it'll get to 10. I'd love to see it get to 10, Mr. Mayor, but I just don't know.
Several months ago, first year, whenever you came and spoke, I liked that idea. My concern then was we would get too dependent on the volunteers, and then after a while you would say, hey, they did, they did ride this horse today, and decided some of what you're doing, what we think that our employees are doing.
Absolutely, and we're excited for you to be looking at a new maintenance person, because we simply can't mow. But one of the things that would help, like in this case, if we were to mow, it'd be nice that the maintenance person would make sure that the mowers are filled with fuel and everything's ready, right? Because if you got a volunteer force, you want them to be able to show up and mow, right? And it would be to his or her advantage to do that. So I think we'll be able to work in good concert. It will work better if there is a maintenance person. So I agree with you, we shouldn't be the only line of defense. And so, like, like you were speaking, one of the things we'd like to be able to do is that if we have a big need, a group may say, hey, we'll come up and help you mow the possums, you know, once a month or something. So, but having that knowledge out there allows groups to know that they can begin to organize within our organization.
Mr. Carter, you got any questions or comments?
No, why do you say same thing to me?
Mr. Carter?
In the mowing and stuff, y'all use the city's equipment?
Yes, ma'am.
In all your projects?
Right.
If the city's got the equipment, y'all use?
Absolutely. And one of the things that, the reason we want to have it like an official force is that, if I, I don't want to speak Lynn, but I think that I understand, like, there's a, there's a bucket of, of workers comp right now, liability that would cover something if we're an official volunteer working in their official capacity.
Our liability, we cover up to five volunteers, that's what we've got right now. And we can increase that a little bit, but we'll cover five volunteers.
Maybe we could cap it at five, but I don't, yeah. So thank you for that, I didn't know that number. But yes, ma'am, we want to make sure that we utilize city equipment. Every now and then if there's a third person, we may mow with a private mower, but I'm like everyone else, I don't want to wear out my mower, mowing the possum palace, so we utilize, yes ma'am. And my weed eater doesn't crank, so I absolutely want to use.
Does that work?
I don't have any question? I appreciate everything that you do for the city.
Thank you.
I know that you've been in the background and helping out a lot with us not having maintenance, and I really appreciate that.
And I'm just a small part, there's some others that look to heavy load, thank you for saying that.
No, I just, do not thank you, Joe. I thank the town most, thank you.
Yes.
And all of you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, there's a force of people, so...
I'm not sure how much the public knows that y'all tackled up a lot of slack while we were in transitions and things like that. Mr. Carter, back for you, we have five and our liability covers it, there's nothing that we, there's nothing by implication that makes that work a compensation, is our workers don't have to cover for a volunteer?
Yeah, that's two different analysis, you're talking about the general commercial liability versus the workers comp, totally separate.
And then a question in fifteen, five years, it never has been asked, Fun Day is a part of the development, we are silent partners or something, we get some permits for the parade because the entity has to do that, like, does that, does their liability extend?
It could be, though some of the attorneys would like to go after folks like us and y'all, they'll find a way to try to attach it if they can, so there certainly can be if you're participating in.
And this is altogether different from using inmates or other groups, does the school, the school summer program, people?
I think that's right, I'm not sure about inmates, but I'm pretty sure they, I think I'm right that they're not considered volunteers, that's a different workforce, obviously not employees, but they, they don't count toward the five volunteer cap, the liability policy.
And I think that the school, summer program, they, they carry their own insurance program there.
Yes, sir.
So do you see any reason that Mr. Phillips should not pursue his organization and work through, is it all right if we just let him work through the office to get job orders and job requests or service requests, whatever you want to call it?
Sure.
They say job need for volunteer to make a request.
My only comment would be, just with that five volunteer cap, I appreciate you raising that, if you had six out there working, you know, insurance companies love to get out from under their coverage so they could say that that voided the policy, just as a FYI, unless we're going to increase it, I would keep it at five.
Yeah. If you want to get ten in your group, just use five at the time.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good, that's good. Sounds like a good deal.
Jeff, I need to fill out...
Call them rotating the volunteers, they're not all called at one time.
Well, thank y'all for that.
Do I need to fill out anything? Do we need to have a volunteer form, or does it not?
Okay, okay, that's it, stop looking.
The background and things like that.
Thank you.
And we know Google, the big leadership, so there's not going to be illegal activities and petitions and things like that, or they can do all of that.
I'm, I'm expecting not. You know, before I put somebody on a mower and let them strike out, I'm going to know who they are, I'm going to know something about them, yes sir, I tend to be a little bit careful, especially in these early stages, someone tend to be quite careful about that, yes sir.
I think we could call them on that.
All right.
Thank you for having, anything you need from us?
No, sir, I appreciate the opportunities.
How many times did you have an order, want to tell us something new, or want to...
We will begin to formally gather, log our volunteer hours so we can allow y'all to have that, it might even help you from any sort of grants or something they're getting.
It does have to grant sometime.
So we'll, we'll begin to log that so we can give y'all something formally.
Okay, sounds good.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Okay, that was the only agenda we wanted. We need to take, our department, we did ask them to...
I'm going to ask you that.
Yeah, let's do that, they don't, they don't come down and, they hear our invitations of, uh, Chief, you going to speak tonight, or?
Former chief.
I was going to let the assistant chief, because he's more knowledgeable on this.
I have knowledge of assistant chief, I'm nobody.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, former, former chief, there we go, former chief.
I'm nobody and everybody all together.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, so, history, two years ago, we hired, we, the fire department, out of our funds, hired a cleaning lady to clean our fire department, our new fire department, okay? At the time, Margaret didn't feel that it was necessary to go through the council to use our funds to do that. That was something we voted on, she felt it was fine, it was actually, if I remember her sister-in-law that was the cleaning lady, and we were paying her $100 a month, clean one time a month, to go deep clean and keep the place up for us. So, when Margaret left, we noticed that the cleaning suddenly stopped, so apparently when we lost Margaret, we lost our cleaning help as well. So, we all got together and talked about it and decided that maybe we needed to hire somebody else. So, one of our firefighters had a sister-in-law that was needing something to do, she cleans house, that's, that's what she does for a living, and she was always willing to pick something extra up. So, we all agreed to hire that person, hire meaning just as a, basically, just a person, we would give 100 bucks to, to come clean. When she come to get paid, Lynn raised issue with that, and thinking that, you know, this needed to come before the council, so I talked with the mayor, me and the mayor agreed to bring it tonight. So that's where we are. I don't know how it works, being, we're using the, our funds that we work for, not the city's funds, that is, comes through the drop. I don't know how it's viewed, I don't really call her an employee, I just call her somebody we pay to, you know, maybe a subcontractor or contractor in a sense, but I wouldn't look at it no different than the people who fix our electricity or fix our phones or stuff like that, you know, so I don't know. Y'all, y'all tell me, are we allowed to have this person? I sure hope so, because I don't want to go back to mopping floors. So what would, what would the council prefer me to do and, or us to do in this situation?
So she's not being paid through the city? I didn't realize that when we were even about, I thought she was being paid through the city.
She's been paying through the volunteer funds that come through the city, we brought checks.
The fund, it's the, the money is held by the city in trust, essentially, okay?
The concern, the concern, and I'm sure that Margaret knew this, and I'm not second-guessing, we, we acquiesce to lots of day-to-day operations too, Margaret, as we lack it, we, and she be comfortable with us, and this may be one of those things, and she thought she had the authority, she would have the... And this may be one of those things, and she thought she had the authority, she would have it. And none of us, I would think, were aware of it, only council that was one of our children, Linda Eaton, who was aware of it. Well, you called me Friday, and then the evening we had a workshop. My concern was that the reason we hold the fire department's money is that a number of years ago, we had some, we had some issues, radios, and people outside of the scope of the department, the city, some things like that. And we went through several years of rambling. We were involved in litigation and some things like that. And as I recall, a part of that litigation was that the voluntary fire department money is, we couldn't spend them. They couldn't do it on budget dues, but the fire department hadn't come back to us to authorize. Which, which to me seems really, really bad if they're out there frying fish or washing cars or whatever they're doing, raising money. And they're raising all the money, then they've got to ask us to spend it or have us spend it. So that, that's, that's kind of, I think, where they're coming from, we work for this, we like to do this.
That makes sense.
But I don't want to do anything that jeopardizes the spirit or the, or the letter of that previous, previous thing. And then I shared with the, with Mr. Smith, the former chief of Smith, that it also, it also was a concern that, I forgot what I was going to say. Does that happen to you?
Carry the funds, I believe, was you going with having the funds?
I was going to say. It hasn't been in, in, in recent months, but most of us took one time another. We've been here when a tire or a pump or a lynch or something was missed at the fire department, we knew that. Do it, and we get money on our, we're funded by trouble from Washington County. That's how we're funded. And, and sometimes they're, they're money in the fire department's fundraiser fund. We'd be ready with ours if we'd survive before we get the fund or something like that. They would want us to pay for that, and then if we pay for it, then when they will pass back, when the end of the year comes and got to balance the budget, then they never had any moving, moving from here back to here. And a hundred dollars a month, that's worth a hundred dollars a year, that buy a couple tires or some things like that. I think they're more stable than they have been in a long time, Mr. Smith.
Yes, really.
I hope you have, okay?
Well, sure. Um, our fire trucks paid off, our rescue trucks paid off. Those hard times of making those payments are done. What we're paying for now is our building. And we reviewed, there is one loan that we have out that's going to come, be done next year, right? And that'd be the flooring that we all agreed to do, to pull a loan on. That'll be complete next, next year, so that money comes back to the drop money and goes back into that account. We were real cautious on how much fuel we'll buy, when we buy fuel, how we spend our money, what we're spending money on, because things are going to break. It's going to happen, but we want to have money when that time comes. So we don't, we don't look for reasons to spend money. Now, there was a time previous, if we had a dollar, we found a reason to spend a dollar, and we don't do that anymore. That's not, that's not the way we run the fire department.
And I think the budget reflects that. Their budget looks pretty good, just a dollar.
Can I ask a question, Mary? Is there anything you guys need over there?
Somebody to clean the floor.
Appreciate, appreciate. I mean, it's not like you guys had a loan, you had the facilities and whatnot. I didn't know if there were any convenient needs that you guys might.
No, no, we're actually.
Because we're, we're right next door to the church, and if we can come along and talk to you.
Actually, we are very self-sustained and quite proud of where we're at at this point. We don't have need for much enough. We don't even have need from, much enough from the council other than make sure our bills are paid.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the council? What Mr. Smith, what the fire department's asking for is, does they be allowed on a recurring basis to pay a hundred dollars a month to someone to claim the fire department? And I think we do need to create a paper trail, give us an invoice once a month.
Even me and Lynn agree with that. Somebody to sign in and out, somebody to be held accountable. I've always agreed with that, absolutely.
Would she be considered a contractor? Are we going to put it on our workers' comp?
Well, I was going to ask about, she's just 1099. You just write her a check for the flat fee, no withholding, no W-2. Just triggers any other contractor like you suggested. Anybody that's performing a service for you over there.
Now, if we need a paper trail, they need to write us an invoice, we can talk about that.
I'd like to have an invoice. I don't like to have a check written.
No, I completely agree. No, there just needs to be a paper trail.
If I was made out of, if I was made out of, I may have signed some checks and this quarter may have, and even just called for us without an invoice. And all of this, not sure if that, I used to initial every invoice, and I'm not, I'm not recalling ever seeing one. So I, I think we need something to, and somebody from, uh, Mayor, Ms. Carter, when we can sign the checks, we'll initial those. And it is, as we have seen it, and it is a proved major, a proved obligation.
And at the end of the year, should we give a 1099, I promise you, Brian, no payments?
From the city. It'll be from the city. The 1099 will be from the city.
That's right.
All right. Is the city going to be paying or is the fire department going to be paying? How is their funds?
Did the fire department pay our, our funds? We've, we've all bought them, we've.
Yeah. It will come out of their funds because we are the bookkeeper for them and the budget manager for them. That's why the 1099 will come to us, but it will be, it will come out of their line item on the boot. If, if we decide to do this. Mr. Porter?
Yes, I would probably.
Go ahead. I just want to discuss it. Have we need a motion before we vote?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay. Okay, we'll get a motion saved, then we'll discuss it, okay? Do it as our second, if I have.
Awesome.
Get a motion saved, but in discussion. Try bringing discussion. Okay, how's the vote, Mr. Porter?
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Okay. Now, as I recall, when you and I were talking about, there's already one service has been done. If we paid, if we paid for that.
I don't have the information. I only have a name.
Okay.
That we have.
Okay. So what we need to do, what we need to do, if you will, is, is create the first statement or something and get us a name and some things like that, because we haven't paid, I guess it's debate, being over who's everyone did. See, everyone she called, some of you vowed, or some of you had called the clerk of vow. We didn't, we didn't pay that because this was all new to us. But if you get that, if she's already done the service and based on this vote, I, we will make her be creative and we will pay her the services she has rendered. And more forward, we will pay her as a presentation of an invoice. Okay, is that good with your vote? Okay. Hold on, Madam Porter.
The first thing in your book is code enforcement updates. I know, like, you asked me a couple of times about those. I did find this in some documents. I don't know what the date on it was, but it was something that Margaret had created. I guess the town has sent out a couple of letters, but the Christopher Vaughn was supposed to be here. Isn't that you? Yeah. He's the one that we had discussed at the last meeting about the noise complaint with the business on Second Avenue. I did send him a noise complaint letter and told him the meeting was stopped. He wanted to come and speak to the council about it. There was, it could potentially be an issue of having a business in a residential area. I put in the packet the pictures that the neighbors are complaining about, as well as the, the county ordinance, and it's listed as Article 2E Home Occupations. I didn't know, we had talked about whether or not we wanted to look at this further. I only sent a noise ordinance, I mean, noise, noise complaint, because that's all council directed me to do. But you can. And the, the code does allow home, home occupations under certain conditions. And the conditions are number one through 11 on the form. The neighbors specifically are arguing, are complaining about the cars in the street and the noise coming from the business and the noise, the cars blocking the road. And so I brought this report to the council to see if you wanted to pursue it further, if you want to talk to Mr. Vaughn about it. See what you want, what was the direction of the council? We do have two neighbors that are calling pretty regularly, wanting to know what the council's going to do. I give it to you.
We had that one coming to other town. Thank you for coming, Chris. Would you like to, would you like to address this? You know what we're talking about?
Come on.
Okay, if you would just come right here to the microphone.
What I need to say here.
But if, if, did you want to address us on any issue or you want to respond to the message for her?
Main reason for coming now is just to let, let her, let the town council or whatever know that the business is being shut down and is probably two weeks from now. Moving everything from that point on to another property. And nothing will be there except for my personal vehicles and maybe one other at a time. There won't be anything in the yard except for my personal vehicles. And I'll tell you, I may have one job there at the house at a time, and that's it. Be no, be no vehicles on the edge of the road or nothing like that.
Okay. Are you going to say, look, or your, your business is going to be?
No, no, I'm just, I'm just moving all the stuff to a different property that I own, and it's, there's nobody around that property, so it's, it'll be a storage lot.
And I, and I wasn't saying that in front, I'm on the, I'm on the planning commission and the land development commission for the whole county. And if you go to a place that doesn't already have a zoning permission, just check it out. You may have to get a land change or some things like that. That, and I'm just offering that as a suggestion, if you've got property and, and even sometimes the property has special exceptions. You don't have to change the land use. You can have a special exception and use the property and some things like that. But if you're going to relocate, it may, may keep you from facing this some other time in another city or even at the county level.
I have property in some straw roads. It's, it's way 15 acres away from everybody, so it has to be a storage then.
Sure.
Try to clean up some and go from there.
And in fact, I can put you in touch with people with the planning commission. They've been, they've been up there to do that. Questions from the council? Mr. Porter, with, with the complacency we've had, he's just addressed, if we say that's an acceptable response, is that?
Yeah, y'all be a good shout there.
Can I ask a question now? If, if just my personal vehicles, I'm working on them. Noise ordinance law, say out there to crank a vehicle. Not, I'm not saying a promo, like a straight exhaust or nothing. I'm just saying cranking a truck to make sure I had my own personal vehicle running right. If I cranked that, it was at 10:30, 7:30, what time are we looking at as far as to crank a vehicle to see if it's actually fixed, my own personal vehicle? And, you know, I don't want to make anybody mad, I have to live there. But when you have a motorcycle being cranked down the road at 2:30 in the morning and being revved on until 3 o'clock and waking me up, what are, what are my, you know, what are my boundaries, what are my stipulations of when I can crank something and when I can't? You know, and 2:30, 3 o'clock in the morning is really early to be woke up by something being revved to the top of its RPM limit. And I've never done that. I've cranked one and let it idle for a second and shut it off. I'm not going to sit there rev on something at 10:30 at night. You have people in that area. But I just need to know when, you know, when's the time limit to cut off. I mean, I work it in the evenings. At night, it's cooler. It is really hot during the day. But I'm not going to say, it's just my personal vehicles will be there after these two weeks. I don't want, you know, stir pot or nothing, but it's just, there's. I understand people are usually in bed by 8:00, 8:30.
Oh.
I guess just use a common sense level enough to.
This is helpful. We need to address this.
Of course.
What, what Lynn was reading, I'm referencing a while ago, this is a page out of the Washington County Land and Government Code. And Washington County District, they have a planning is on for Ebro, Kirby, Warsaw, Auburn. And she has their own council and their own staff and that kind of planning commission. Number nine here says that home-based business that create odor, vibration, peace, smoke, dust, glare, fumes, or noxious odors shall operate only between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. I don't know who come up with the hours or anything like that, but they are in there and they reference a section of the Land Development Code that you can, that you can use. You know, if you know, if you're working on a lawn mower right before you go home from work, the days don't get dark till 8 o'clock. I might be out there with a screwdriver and trying to make that lawn mower idle or lidle down or something like that. And be, sometimes some of those lawn mowers will create as much noise as some of the vehicles that Chris might be working on. However, if Chris has got a big diesel up there or car or truck with glass packs on it or loud boopers or something like that, he has to rev it up a little bit. That's going to make the lawn mowers. Thing in the car or something like that, I don't know.
I mean, I'll do my best to respect everybody, but I mean, just as far as if I finish my personal vehicle and I need it for the next morning to drive to work, I'm going, I'm going to take another job and go back to work for somebody else. If I, if I'm out there at 10:30 and I've worked on my truck to keep it running for the next day and I need to crank it, and, you know, my diesel's loud, I don't want to offend the neighbors, but I need to be able to crank it to, to make sure I'm going to make it to work.
I'm not being just a little bit of creative in by definition, but if you're working on your own car, I would have a concern. That's not a business.
No, I'd say the business will be over in two weeks and it'll be nothing more, so.
Would that be safe?
Absolutely, Brian. They'll take care of this whole thing and move it. And as far as personal vehicles, I mean, you still got to buy, buy the noise ordinance, but I think excessiveness is, is the key. That's the analysis. Trying something out, checking that, trying personal vehicle. Everybody ought to be able to do that.
I promise not to back out there on the highway and do a John Force burnout to the end of the street, but I need to crank one.
And the noise thing is going to be difficult. Remember what we went through probably a year, year and a half ago and slacking shit it out. Remember we had to have, we had to have a disc four meter and all kinds of things like that. Y'all remember when that come up on the other end of town? And, uh.
Very difficult to force.
It's very difficult to force. I don't think to go to other people's rights, but it's just very difficult to, to, to end and force and those pieces of equipment to get one or two loud boopers is just more expensive than practical.
I mean, there's some of the law that I've worked on their diesels around here that is, I've altered exhaust on and made louder. And, you know, diesel's going to be loud, but.
Chris, let me ask you this. If something comes up that you're, you don't want to let your move in a couple of weeks or whatever, you're telling us, and I would just let Lynn or let some of us go to the city hall because we do have to answer to the other people. And I, I, I hope this is not like a neighbor dispute sort of thing. We don't want to be referees, but you, you, I know you, that you would be respectful of them, but if you came, if you came back here, would you let us know, please?
Okay, yeah. As I say, I've got three vehicles I'm trying to finish now. And if I can't finish them, the one will stay. The one I was telling you about will stay. The rest of them will go. And I have had contact with the neighbors. I mean, they came over the other night, voiced his opinion very loudly. And I listened and respectfully, I declined out of any, you know, and told him I'd work on it, you know. Best I can do at the moment, you know, try to avoid any kind of problem.
Do we have a dress to council? With Chris's complacency? Thank you for coming, Chris, and good luck on your move. You're going to keep living here, but you didn't want to.
I'm going to keep living here, yeah. Try to clean up some.
I think there's another word for customer, Chris, so don't worry.
Stay there as long as I, as long as I can anyway.
Okay. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. The next time, is it a month or so ago, we've had a request from a resident. The next time, is it a month or so ago, we've had a request from a resident to see if they could get an extra garbage can. I think y'all remember they wanted to clean out the shed. And I was instructed to go to waste management and ask them, could we work out something? Their answer was no. Because they said they offer us free cans four times a year. They felt like if they wanted to clean out their shed, maybe they could do it during the amnesty week, that they'd give us the free things. And it was, it would be too burdensome for the driver, they didn't want, they basically did not wanna do it. I told them I would report back to the council, if y'all didn't want them to come speak to us, he said they'd be glad to, but they're giving us four dumpsters four times a year and they'll dump them, so there's potential we could get eight dumpsters four times a year for free. They felt like that was enough. So I told them I would report back to the council.
Being there, we have a small dumpster, you know, one that's small, you know.
That's what I had to do.
I don't disagree with that as far as about kind of situation, like I got a puppy just out. In the usual week, you have a death and you pay him, you got two garbage cans full of stuff. Some people, sometimes they just need that extra, it's about a gallon, bring a garbage can out there one time and all year, many years, something like that. We've got garbage cans here doing on. That's about, that wouldn't solve the problem, we'd love to get one of these because when they trip, comes to pick them up, they still set it out there, that's, that's one of the problems.
And they've gotten very strict on it. I mean, we were having customers call and complain and because if they see a branch sticking out the top of it, he's not picking it up. He says this is for household garbage. Or if he sees some, one of them had some sheet rock, piece of sheet rock in there, they wouldn't, he wouldn't pick the can up. So they're, he's getting, the driver's getting very aggravated or whatever because he's like, I'm here to pick up household garbage, that's considered another kind of garbage, it does not have anything commercial for the household can, so. But he gets, he has a list, so he knows he goes house to house to house. Exactly how many cans we're supposed to have, and he won't pick it up if it's not on that list, so. They felt like they were being very generous to the town. Four dumpsters, four times a year, and they'll dump the dumpsters. Do we not pay for that? They go for free.
That was an attachment, that was, that was an attachment to keep the call right.
And it's two, since I've been here, all the weeks that we have, they've come picked all four of them up and dumped them and brought new ones, so people are loading them up. Next week is the free week, we'll have the things here. So that was just a report to you that they had said no, unless you want them to come speak to the council about that. Sounds like they're pretty proud of it.
I don't think they'll say yes.
The next thing in your book is a request from the Kiwanis Club to partner on a golf tournament. They're looking up, we want to sponsor a home at hundred and fifty dollars or sponsor a team for four hundred dollars. It'll be June fourteenth. When's June fourteenth? We missed that, I just got this in the, this is in the, that's a long date. The next thing, the town officials book update, Mr. Park had asked me to approach the development club about updating that town official book. We talked about it for a long time at the development club and nobody there felt like they had the time to do it, so it might, it may be something we can bring back here to the town. But with us doing Fun Day and the trunk or treat, and now the light at the square, the development club just said we do not have time to do that. That trunk or treat itself, last year we ran out of food at a thousand, we're planning on twelve fifty this year. So people are really starting to come to the town, especially for the trunk or treat. Oh, is that a good time?
Chris sliding his step.
Picking up, so. I'll see if we can, I'll see if we can figure out some way to get that done. I'm not gonna just shove it.
We're not gonna be here.
What are you looking at and doing, Mr. Parker?
To update the town officials book.
I don't, when you say update, are you just talking about any new pictures or are you talking about any narrative?
New pictures, new pictures and descriptions.
I think it went through nineteen ninety, didn't it?
Yeah.
Eighty-nine or ninety.
Yeah, so it would be from ninety to twenty, twenty-five to do, or twenty, twenty-four to do. We can work on that. Yeah, that's not earth shaking, it's gotta be done right now.
It'd be, it'd be good to do, then if we get into print, not like you have print costs at the same time they have. But I'm, I'm, I'd actually do it too. The uh, your book will work, I think, if this is done. Probably the last century two began. I'd like to see, if somebody come back and re, re put it up, they was, they was taken down and hidden sometime and the council voted, market vote, come back up. But they're not in hardly any semblance of order, the way the services were rendered, things like that. I'd like to see, we might can gather pictures and put them up here, even before we've done that book or something, but are maybe put together. What about our summer workers, do they do that?
That's what I was thinking, I actually was seeing if I can get them to start working on it. Well, I'm gonna go back and research, who was on the, who was on the council, who was the mayor, Chris McDermott was the clerk, so it's gonna take a little bit of research and reaching out to them. It may be something they could do.
If you, I, I would tell you, if you get the list to serve from the last one is until now. If I can contact some of the locals, I, I serve a number of them. I try, I try to get the picture, get a picture, if they're deceased, give them their family or something like that, I could take a few of them, just try to. Maybe the rest of us can do that too. You're gonna do both serve.
I'll see if there's pictures that you can go on there.
This is your second, second time serving or third, second time. Your dad served.
Twenty years.
Yeah.
Ben is picture, ain't no, no. Well, see, you, you let the father leave, huh?
I'll see if I can get that, I'll see if I can get that done through the town hall. The next thing is that, Jen, is the adoption of the addendum to the town's procurement policy. The town has a policy and every time we do a new grant, we have to present it to Florida Commerce. We presented this procurement policy for the Second Street and Well Project, it was, it passed, but when we presented it for the Oi and Cora, they wanted an addendum. So this is just the addendum to the procurement policy, and I think Fred Fox told me this is the second or third, every time you send it to Florida Commerce, they want something new in it, so. This is an addendum to our procurement policy that I need for the Oi and Cora grant. And he was telling me there's new things from HUD in here, HUD has some new regulations, so I put those in here.
Probably includes another affordable housing, it's altogether separately, isn't it?
What is?
Affordable housing, uh, not, not affordable housing, discrimination housing.
All of those are the original, where, yeah, these are just some, the wording is something that HUD.
I read this this afternoon. It's more or less played, uh, doing the majority and most of it, but uh, so when we're in a grant, it's gonna be over Fred Fox and you're not, we're not gonna have to have it come to the city hall and our fur and assistant for two of our staff, and I'm gonna have to go out there and say, well, one of you gotta compare things, I'm gonna compare a dable from Ace Hardware and one of the Townsend Hardware and one of the surplus. That says if we make comparisons and we do all kinds of things like that, we don't have the staff. We kinda case to win too. We can't get a grant, we don't do this, and if we do this, we're gonna be reinforced. But I'm thinking that our grants for rider and grants for walkers are supposed to be the ones that make sure that everything that we do, and they write all of our apps and do that all. So I, I think we, I think we'll be all right and.
What happens, we sent our procurement, our current procurement policy to Florida Commerce for this, for the Cora and Oi. They sent back the things and says, this is what you must include in it. So they, Fred and them wrote an addendum with the items that they said must be included in it.
Fred did, this is a peanut allergy.
Well, Florida Commerce actually did it, we just wrote it out. They told us what it had to say. But I have to get it approved by the council and send it back.
Ask the council.
I'll make that motion and get it sent approved.
Hey, we got a motion and, is there a second?
No, second.
We got a motion and a second and you discuss on the motion. Abo's Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Carter. Yes, Mr. Carter.
Yes.
Chair, which is?
The next, let me chut down just a minute. The next is the cemetery plots. Carol West came to the town hall and wants to give back seven cemetery plots that were, that her father and mother had for many, many years. It's about seven plots, she said no one in her family's gonna use them. And I told her I would need to come to the council, make sure, she didn't wanna be paid for, she just wants to hand them back. She said she didn't pay for them, she don't wanna be money for them. So um, I told her I wanted to come to the council, make sure that y'all would accept them back, and then I would work with Jeff to see what we need to do to take them back.
How bad, oh, they're not needed, I don't imagine, are they?
Uh, they are now.
They were?
They, they weren't supposed to be.
To George?
Uh, no.
Oh, no, not, not then.
They weren't then.
Then, oh, okay.
These, I remember, you know, right, they're pretty old, right?
Yeah, they're pretty.
Transfer was old.
They're all, they're all, all we do is just rest that name off and we got seven of these plots. I, I think my concern with that one, and I addressed it to Lynn, is that we know she can give those back, she has a brother here.
And we, we was back and forth about that, and they would have, the estate would have to have been probated. One of them would have to be the PR, the first representative, have letters of administration, all the things to close the estates and then give that person, if it's her or him, the authority to deal with assets of the estate. Which these would be part of, so they would have to provide us some kind of, some kind of something on paper, typically letters of administration saying that they can do it. And then another way we could accomplish it is I could draft a disclaimer before and she, and he could both sign it. Witness it, no rise up against the city.
That's a little bit weird. I'll tell you, these are not probating the state and they're really.
Well, if they're in agreement, they could do it that way, just disclaim their interest. How long has their parents been passed out there? Is it more than seven years?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And she said she wasn't, she doesn't know where he's at, the brother.
Yeah.
He's off somewhere, didn't come home for the parents' funeral, so she's not sure. But she said they left everything to me, 'cause I said, are you the personal representative, are you the executor of the state? She just said she hasn't paid for something, left everything to her. She wasn't clear.
If she could provide that, and then she did the disclaimer that I, it's just a statutory disclaimer, it's not a lot to, it would take about fifteen minutes to draft it, I mean, it would over the line. That would take care of it, and he could always show it later and throw a flag over it. They'd have to work out amongst themselves first.
He'd have to prove that.
Exactly, yes sir.
I think when you do it, we're not, we're not at the block here, but they're getting fewer and fewer in our system, if we can get seven back, we, you know, we, after we started having to charge for them, there's been several that sold back, we buy back what they give, I'm not interested. It's one thing, a lot of money on one, but these weren't sold and they're gonna give them back, which is the right spirit, right attitude, I think about that, and so. We need to vote on accepting these back pending this disclaimer, or
Yes, sir.
that Mr. Carter's talking about, okay? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, we accept the seven lots back from the larger stamp pending the proper documentation, is there a second?
How second?
Motion, second and discuss on the motion. Abo's Carter.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Chair, which is?
And Lynn, I'm just gonna use whenever the time comes, all the information, some kind of information to identify each lot, and we can do it bulk in one disclaimer.
Okay.
And if it's a number.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Be sure that you, be sure that we send it, I'd better thank you to the.
Okay, the next thing I have was the hiring of the maintenance person at the interviews last week, and we all had decided on Ronnie Brenner. Since that time, he had decided he's not interested in taking the job. So I'm coming back to the council to see if you want to go with the second person, or if you want to re-advertise.
If we don't accept the second person that's out of the three, can we just send out new bids?
Re-advertise, yes ma'am.
Re-advertise.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna do, I'll do that. Can we hire somebody in the meantime to fill in to mow the grass and stuff, because it's grass season?
It would have to be an emergency.
That's not an emergency.
I think our, our, she won't, I think you did the, the setup the interviews, that we said that we would make a decision tonight. And then our workshop, we just want to put on the consideration, because we have a consensus and, and we haven't offered him the job, we haven't. But I thought it was true to be, okay, mine, I called it, I changed my. The last person that we interviewed would have been my second choice, and his credentials was good, but we need to re-advertise, if this is the council decision, we do have, I, I think we'd have qualified person there on paper. Mr. Parker, was there one of the three that I knew, and you anything about his work background or anything like that?
I did have two people that came into the town hall and said they weren't aware that it was advertised and mentioned that maybe next time I want to put in the newspaper, which I did not do. I could do that, if y'all want to do that, so that local people might have more. How did we advertise that?
I, I advertise it off of it.
One stop.
Yeah, at the one stop center.
I'd say the Threys and the, and the electronic Threys and the door and.
Get the word out to as many people as we can.
Maybe John would be to get their wife and drive around and hand out flowers. We need to get.
I think it's an emergency, yeah. Emergency thing.
Does that, what would I have to do, re-advertise? Is it not burning, Chris?
Did you talk to the one that would have been like second place award? I wonder if he would be interested with the pay.
Well, let me back that up. He did call to want to jump around, make some decisions tonight, and I said yes. And he asked me, do you know what the pace gonna be, 'cause I think he mentioned in interview, and I said, well, I don't think it'll go for seventeen. I didn't discuss it any further than that. I said, send it to the council.
He was used to making a lot of money.
Yeah.
And he had some help issues, you know, sort of, he burned out too, I'm a little afraid of that myself. But it's all, it's all. It'd be good to advertise again. I like Joe coming, you know, maybe he could use the volunteers to help donate a raise. Would that be feasible, Lynn?
I'd like to, yeah, I'd like to.
Call the, you know. If they fire, it doesn't even matter.
The chair would enter time to motion, did we re-advertise the manager's record? And in that, he advertised the, all was, all was, he wanted seventeen, I think, I think, sixteen, that was it, was it sixteen?
Well, he was hired back, he did hear, six months, you get a raise, I think he did hire.
Four, five years.
Shared with sixteen.
It was sixteen. It was sixteen. Yeah. We could do seventeen there and a few passes probation, or we could go to something else if he, if he think that's right, yeah, but.
They will, they do, according to the policy, we get a dollar raise, a dollar an hour raise after six months. So after six months, if you last, you'll go up to seventeen.
He was, the other gentleman, he was seventeen, eighteen, and they want to go to seventeen, but really go to eighteen and.
Eighteen or fourteen?
Yeah. The chair would entertain a motion that we re-advertise and then we advertise the start salary sixteen dollars an hour. And then we put it in both the print and electronic advertising, put it back on the workshop, any place that you can put the advertising.
And you can put in there, start salary sixteen and six months later, the dollar.
I wouldn't say six months, but he's got the highest probation, in my opinion.
We've got periodic.
We've got paid.
I'd say the probation there, period, six months.
Yeah. And so if that's in the policy, then we wouldn't have to do anything anyway. It's already a vote by policy. You agree with that?
I agree with him.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion or a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion on the motion. Is that right, Rick?
Yes.
Or snaps?
Mr. Carter? Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Sheriff, which is?
The next thing is in your packet this morning. I got a thing from Marcy that she had resigned as of July third. It's the very first thing under personnel. I want to see what the council would want me to advertise for that position or. I did ask her if she wanted to come tonight, but she didn't want to.
When did, when did that get done?
July third.
July.
About two weeks. Do you have it?
I don't.
Well, we probably won't start to advertise that one too.
I thought I'd recommend the evening of it. How's the rest of the sweep been?
It's been good. It's been good. I was, I was surprised. I was very surprised this morning. We've both been trying extra hard.
Did you talk to Mr. Carter about Monday night's meeting?
Yes.
Is he going to talk about? Her resignation does not preclude her from suing by kind of grievance against us, is it? If that's what her intent is.
I did not talk to him about grievance because y'all had given her permission to comment directly. I didn't mention that to him.
No, she's still good. And just because somebody quits doesn't mean that unemployment law houses that they can't claim that they quit under duress or they had to, you know, or in conditions, you get laundry listed, this items, if you're good to that.
I thought for the last day, she did mention that she did take, I knew, I didn't know you had this here, but I didn't, I have said that, that weren't even a takes today. I was aware that we would just probably discuss it tonight if everybody had to. We have to deal with the hard as well as the easy. I don't think we've got any choice at this point in time to, to accept the resignation. If, or we leave, or we, I'm not the attorney now.
Well, you've been doing this a long time, so you, you know.
I think, and then Mr. Carter, I think you would be reminded, we need to advertise.
Well, we need to accept her resignation.
Yeah, that needs to be first. The chair would accept the motion to accept the resignation of Marcy Brown from Assistant Town Attorney's Position.
You need a motion. I'll make the motion. We accept her request. Her quit.
Have a motion. Have a motion or a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion?
Are we going to keep what you locked for?
I think so.
If she was, if she was to, if we all, someone, if Monday morning, just one person in the office and their transition or anything, I don't know.
Yeah, if she don't, she don't.
I would be favorable to her staying until the day of her resignation. If the council agrees, I think it would be a good thing. Any other discussion? Mr. Wilson?
No, no, no.
No, I'm not confident about it, have you, but?
Yes.
Mr. Rutherford?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
And Sheriff, which is? Before we, if I can start the discussion, before we do advertise, something we've heard of in the last few months and even going back before that. And we tried to work the market and extend and something like that, but when she got eligible for her social security, rather than extending or getting a raise, she had to start cutting back and if she continued to work. I think I'm hearing from Marcy and from Lynn, we don't have time. We don't, I get it all done. We've got some things going on. I think we may be all flipped up. And you know, giving a raise is a good thing. Married raise is a good thing. I'm giving a raise unless I have. But you can, you mean ten dollars an hour more than I make it now? And that don't make any more hours in the day. It don't make me able to do any more work sometimes. So money's not always the, is not always the answer. I, for years, have thought that the city holding up five days a week was a good thing. And we might have to do something for one more, Monday to Thursday, one more for Tuesday, Friday, books, they're four days. They still just work four days. But three of those days are both here. And I don't care on Friday, most places are used to the office being closed. I wouldn't care if they closed the door. They just worked in here. Yes, we're done with an interruption. There's some things we can do, but I don't know that we have the money to extend the hours. You're making twenty eight hours. Or she was making.
She's twenty eight, not twenty?
Twenty and twenty eight. That's between two people. We've got one, we've got one employee for a week and eight hours. We either need two people or we don't. And we, if we want more work, it may be on us to create an atmospheric environment for more work to be done. And the only way I see that being is, is, is with more hours.
Lynn, you know, do you think that you could run this town all the way as well?
I'm, I'm.
That's a good.
Barbara did it for seven years.
We did that seven years.
Well, I know she can.
I, I can do it. The problem is when you have to go out in the open, like, we don't, we don't get a maintenance guy. I have, I'm cutting on the water, cutting off the water. Going to the leaks, looking for meters. You have to shut the doors, which, I mean, we can, I can do that. That's okay. I know there were complaints before that every time people come to see you, all the doors were closed. They didn't like that. But you have to do that if you're one person here. And I'm okay with that. Yeah, just put a note on the door and do what you got to do.
Yeah.
And you talk about making one person in to be a full composition?
I, I would, I would, yeah, I don't know. Lynn knows, she knows more about it than I do.
I really don't, I really don't want to work full time. What I want to do is I want to get somebody that needs a long career, that I can teach, that I can train to, I mean, I'm sixty one years old. Four years, I'll be sixty five. I'd love to get somebody young that I can train and teach, that I could just, you know, transition out of here. In the top ten years.
That's a good, I mean, that's good. We, we, we would like that, somebody, you know, younger. I mean, I can't say nothing about age. Sometimes people need to move on. We got a president that might need to move on. He's just mine, and I might too. I can't say it's more much.
I think what you say is, is, is right again. And you're still kind of training yourself. I, I just kind of part of seeing you teaching when you're still learning some of it. And once we go back to just like what we learned, but if, if Marcy didn't have time to do her job and you didn't have time to do yours, and if you do have to go into the field and something has to land in your desk, if we close the office on Friday, you can come in and work on that stuff when your desk, when it's quiet and things like that. That was, that was my thought. Now, how we adopted the hours to make that work and, and I don't, and I don't know the answer to that. So twenty hours, you're not, and I know that you retired from the work before, but you're not, you're not even working for benefits then.
I'm not in the retirement system again either.
Okay. So Marcy was, Marcy was written for, for benefits and, and the Florida retirement system, so probably the next person's going to be looking at that. And I, and I would if I was the next person. It's the job description that we adopted a few months ago. That was, that was a pretty comprehensive job description, I thought, but we need to look at it before we advertise. Oh, we still satisfied with that?
Didn't, that's the one that chewed up that, right?
We just had, probably the first of the year, probably in the last six months.
Yeah.
Y'all can, first satisfied that, if that gets in there, I think, if that's all.
And they're going to need to do that. If, if I'm going to train them to, to take it, they're going to have to know how to go turn the meters on, turn the meters off, and put the red tags out. I need to make sure too that whoever we interview, make sure that they're aware that that is part of their job.
I expect we didn't do a good job on that before.
I mean, it's not like, they have to do it all the time, but when we're in between maintenance people, maintenance men, women, whatever. They need to know.
How long can you, how long can you do it as basic to first advertise and get some?
Can we advertise now? And Marcy still can be here for two more weeks?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Well, just go ahead and advertise.
Advertise now?
Maybe two weeks, well, absolutely.
Send an interview by the time she leaves or something.
He had a good little idea.
Had a good idea.
All right, I'll entertain a motion for that.
Sir, can I ask you something before you do that? We're going to do it under the deputy clerk job description, right? Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay.
Okay. Advertise the deputy's order to job description. What do we want to do? Back in two weeks, it's going to be the week of fourth of July.
Fourth July is on Thursday.
Yeah, two weeks from today, I think.
So we come back on the eighth, that would be Monday.
Fourth of July is too close. We just cut them off. Well, and the other thing, the other thing is that the week of the eighth, I'm on vacation. I had planned it way back. We had already rented a condo for a week in Disney. I did talk to Margaret today to say, listen, can you, would you be interested in coming and just keeping the office open? She says she'd be willing to do that if council wants her to, or if not, we would just have to shut it for the week. I had no clue this was coming or.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have paid for it.
I'm doing more as far as knowing that we know her not again, or she would be possibly receiving money and all of that, with that, with that creative. She's a former.
Yeah, that'd be fine, yes, sir.
She does want the twenty dollars an hour money to account, which is what she left at. They'd want to go ahead with the job first, but then.
Let me just for a week, right?
Yeah, just four days.
Well, if we don't have a maintenance man by then, and we don't have a water person by then, just shut the office down for me. It's only four days.
Would that work?
I can put, yeah, I can put a sign on the door now that the week of July eighth through whatever will be closed.
I don't see the one that one work. Four days.
Yes, see, you leave on maybe one of the eights. And at five o'clock Monday morning and Monday afternoon, the eighth, there'd be three, there'd be three more mains and nine meters.
We're going to fix them anyway.
I'm hoping I got volunteer kids here.
We're going to fix them anyway.
Shameful.
Wow, you picked a fine time to leave me in the city.
I know, but I was like, I had spent so much money on that.
That made, that's, you know.
Other, other offices shut down for waiting for vacation.
We've been very unfortunate not to have those kind of tragedies. Okay, let's do one kind of time here, I suppose, let's do one kind of time. We will advertise this job description and what is, what is, what, because she, she's, she's already got her motion to put on the start page.
She's at fifteen sixty now.
Does she?
Seven, she started at fifteen, I don't know.
I'm thinking that's probably right. And our policy says they get a dollar raise or they get a raise.
In six months.
She must have started at fifteen.
Well, you don't say, don't say a dollar. That's what Marcy said. Margaret said y'all always said.
Yeah. And that might be right because sometimes that percentage raise, like after that first year, that percentage, it won't always be a dollar, it'll be a percentage.
Right, three percent.
Yeah, three percent, what we, so that's where the sixty cent come in. Okay, we will advertise at fifteen, fifteen dollars an hour?
Go back and check what Marcy started at, my little working.
You're going to start where she started. She's only been here two years and, and she's this is no reflection because recently she's only had this at start, I'm sure, and she's only learned her part of it, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't go back to fourteen.
Okay, I've got minimum wage to fifteen, Jeff, do you know?
Next year.
What, it's next year?
Next year. Is fifteen all right? It's going to be minimum wage before we get into another budgeting wave. We'll have to get ready somewhere.
They started at fifteen.
That's what I mentioned. All right. I advertise this job description at fifteen dollars an hour. I'm going to leave it at twenty eight hours. We might could get to, we might could extend the hours a little bit through the budget year. We've got all the money from Pierre's position that has accumulated. We've got some from Tim's position that has accumulated, hasn't been paid out.
We're going to pay, say, five hundred a month on that insurance. I'd say five hundred a month on that insurance that we're paying Marcy now, is six thousand a year.
We'll save that unless the next person wants insurance.
But we said we'd pay it at five hundred.
So it wouldn't be one day.
Terms is a thousand, so we're going to save it five hundred.
Yeah, okay, okay. Thank y'all for coming.
Yes.
Thank you, Brother Sulu.
Yes, sir, we'll see you.
What was that? Or do we want to start it at twenty eight? We are. The next person may just be fireball of energy and, and not work last year. I think from Monday night's conversation, some of what I heard is that Marcy was good, but she was slow, or slower than, we'll see if the things do. We may want to leave it at twenty eight and if we need more hours, see if we can budget it into the year. We're going to, we're off in a couple of months from starting a budget workshop or starting budgets, budgeting budgets.
I think I'll leave it at twenty eight if that's. So if that's fine, we got it.
Twenty eight, yeah. Ad- advertise at twenty eight hours. So when do we want to, when do we want to open these for interviewing or whatever we want to do? Can we? It was accumulated, Stephen, all the money, we can wait until the next board meeting. I don't, I don't, I don't know. I think we can keep on waiting on the maintenance person because their day is just an accident waiting to happen. Can we go a month without the assistant and you keep up?
Sure.
If we close that week?
What I can do is instead of getting up at 1:00, I'll put mine up to 2:00. I get up at 1:00 P.M., I'll get up at 2:00 P.M. Give me five more hours a week. And I can keep going. And I have a great Friday, so I didn't wait more. I just don't count it.
I understand. Well, our next meeting is the 18th, and we're talking about being closed the week of the 8th, so it's, it's the week of the 15th. Can we just go, can we just do all this at the next meeting rather than call a special meeting and then the next week have a record meeting?
Yeah.
And interview them?
Yeah. I think so now. I'm just told.
We got a whole special meeting to do, interview?
We can do, we can do that. We can do that just like we did this week. We can do that on Monday, which would be the 15th. And then have our record meeting on the 18th. It'd be two in the same week, but it is, sometimes the calendar is just, is full of something this week, something next week, and something next week.
That's good. Interviews on Monday, meeting on Thursday.
Oh, what about, do y'all think we can do the maintenance? I mean, this is really good office that we're getting from our, from our community, from children, from that. If he feels, if he feels like he can continue to help us out there, can we do the maintenance the same day, the 15th, or do we want to do? That next week.
Interview for the maintenance side of the work on Saturday.
It's not going to be easy, but.
If we, if I make it longer, 15 applications, would you have time to, would you have time to narrow down to top three like you did in four?
We could bring the top three in on each position.
Still, that would still be six interviews.
Yeah, that'd be a long time.
But if you do them all during the meeting, that'll be real, real long.
I'd say the interview's on, interview's on Monday, and then have our regular meeting on Thursday.
If I, if I had the time, I can put in to be off, and we can do it earlier, because I know I'm going to hold it up.
Could you be here as early as 4:00 on Monday if we told you now? That's what we did this day.
15 to 4:00.
No, we did it more early than that.
Yeah, but I mean, I, just however long it takes me to drive and bomb that. But I mean, I'm saying I can, if I know I had the time, I'll go ahead and ask if we all, we can do it earlier than that.
Oh, even earlier?
Yeah.
Okay. Is the 15th good with everybody? I don't even have a talk.
You do the next day, so you don't hold it late.
Well, I can say that the 15th now.
Okay, the 15th. What about 3:00 then, mid-afternoon or something?
Okay.
Is that, is that?
That seems better, yeah.
I could get on 4:00. Okay. Then the, then the interviews be set for that, close applications and everything for that.
Okay.
Or we're good, or we're good with everything we said. Sure, we need to put all that in motion.
I got the motion, Park, Mr. Parker, Park to advertise.
We'll just make it, then we just say, force his motion.
Okay, got it.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll say it.
The motion is having any discussion? Sheriff Bush, yes?
Yes.
I've heard.
Yes.
Or, yes.
Yeah, that's all.
Yours. Okay. Mr. Parker, have you anything to tell us for that?
I do have something. I'm just waiting, a little wait, we got time to, I don't want to talk about it.
Okay. Minuteman, word?
I do not.
Mr. Ward's name?
That's him.
Mr. Parker?
No, I'm good.
Okay. We did lots of, we did lots of those slips that can table that page. Tell me, tell me notes here. Did VFC recommend, they go, I'll review that. It's not, they had a meeting at 5:00 in the morning.
Who?
Fire Department, made it so they had a meet at 5:00 in the morning, and just have the food, somebody from the fire department. I wondered if one of the days they had a cookie out here, they got it for us to work. Have you heard anything from Donna Campbell about them?
I, I checked with Donna, see she had heard of you, but Donna, and she said no.
Did you ever match money? We've gotten that all, but we haven't heard from them.
We have not heard from them. Let me, I don't really want to think about that. So the well project, we're going to replace that generator out there like for like. That generator has not a lot of hours on it anymore. The last time I had somebody come and service it. I wonder why can't we move that generator up to the town hall? He said that is a huge generator out there. It's going to be basically nothing done with it. He said we won't be able to sell it for what it's worth. And at the time, they, this is what the contract was, the engineer was saying, at the time we get somebody moved out, we can take, take that same crane and bring it right over here and drop it. We wouldn't need to pay the $10,000, we'd have to have to pay it for the other well, for the other generator. And we can talk about that later. We're now a close to.
Again, and they could, they could do the engineering and all the things about you too.
The, the generator people will hook it up.
Yeah, yeah. I think she's fault there. I know y'all talking about, I didn't know y'all were there, because we've got some stuff over here to keep this people cool here.
Right.
I'm in favor of that.
We're having to do something with it anyway.
In the sense, yeah, it's hours, we're going to have to expose it or use it, I'd say, depending on cost.
Yeah.
The located water meters, do we ever find any water meters?
We're down.
I think I have one of those missing.
Yep, you do.
If y'all haven't found it yet.
No, I've had, I want to ask you something about tonight. We're down to about, well, we thought we were down to three, but Jason came back and some of the ones Randall had put, has found or not found. So in the morning at 6:30, Joe and Sharon are going out with Jason to relocate the ones that were left.
Are you the workers? We got, we got one in here.
We got one here, and she is doing phenomenal.
Okay.
She is doing so good. And we have four community service workers that are in and out.
Can, can they go to the cemetery?
I, I mean, I didn't know.
They had to be supervised.
I didn't.
And if we give them use to tell them to.
Someone have to get their mother?
Not community workers, anybody. Community service workers, they can, we can assign them a job and, I don't know anymore. We should say, assign them a job, if you, if you pick up all the paper and move the yard from here to the street at 100, it's worth 15 hours of whatever it was. If they done it seven, they still got 15. If they done it twenty, they still got 15. But most of it was hour to hour, and we had to sign off, but there was some exceptions. Any granite updates?
Um, did, I think I did the granite base a year, didn't I? We had a site visit from Florida Commerce on the Second Avenue Well Project and the paving, this well tube and the paving. We set a strict timeline on when it needs to be done. That grant ends April 28th of next year. No way we're going to be ready. And so we filed for an extension for September of 28th, but these are Hurricane Michael funds, and they said after September, there will be no more extensions. So they sat down with us, John was here, representative Fred Fox was here, I was here, and we sat down and created a very strict timeline of what we've got to do when to get this, to get those projects finished. They had some questions on the Second Avenue, because when they went down and looked at it, the water was dry. I don't know how that happens. I don't know where that comes from or what feeds that. But, you know, that was a project because we said that the water flooded in that area.
All we needed is another house we're doing there.
Yeah. And so they questioned John that a little bit, but he's, he's getting with them to see if he needs to revamp, revamp that or whatever on Cora. And Oy, we just accepted the engineer. So he'll get started on getting those planes ready. On the Collins House, we haven't, we have received a, a word letter, but no contract. We haven't gotten anything on Rogers Square. So that's the ones we've got going right now.
I think the last thing I have, we got a two collection. Things here, we've got, it's been used tonight. I may be here every day. We're even at $900. Are we down to?
We're down to 617. That's what Marsha did. That's 90216.
And that one we, that's the newest?
Yes.
Okay. And I may have asked you last month, and, and I apologize if I forgot, the thing said that they would shut off dates, said in June of 23rd.
I asked Marsha about that. She wasn't sure how to get that on or off, so I, and she wasn't real sure exactly what that meant.
Did want to pick that up. She hasn't been shut off a year later. And somebody had probably been on there for a year. I see they haven't been on there. They've been on there just about every time.
Oh, yeah.
For several years.
We have your regular ones. She and I did talk about these that have like 68 cent. It causes them to be on the collection list. Just roll that over to the next month's bill. Just don't show them in the collection. And that little bit of money.
We've got, we've got a contract somebody to, to go after the links. Are we ever getting anything from them?
We haven't, we haven't seen it since I've been here. I asked Marsha about it. She wasn't, she's not aware. I guess we send the letter, from what I understand, and then if they collect it, they notify us and say, this is your part of what we collected. But.
That's not, that's not on the act, or that's on the account.
I see two down here for a dollar, $59, $49.
Right.
Roll that back, back into the bill.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I had asked her to do. I'm like, you know, throw that back in, let's take that off that collection.
I'd like, I'd like to do that, keep on seeing, show what we need to report. That Second Street, though, you're talking about, will be adjourned?